I'd like to call the December 2015 Meeting of the Board of Education to order. First invocation by Ms. Kraft.
Yes. Good evening. This is a busy time of the year and I know you all are feeling the crunch, but I just wanted to share with you the important things in life. A philosophy professor stood before his class with some items on the table in front of him. When the class began, wordlessly, he picked up a very large and empty mayonnaise jar and proceeded to fill it with rocks about two inches in diameter. He then asked the students if the jar was full. They agreed that it was. So the professor then picked up a box of pebbles and poured them into the jar. He shook the jar lightly. The pebbles, of course, rolled into the open areas between the rocks. He then asked the students again if the jar was full. They agreed it was. The professor then picked up a box of sand and poured it into the jar. Of course, the sand filled in the remaining open areas of the jar. He then asked once more if the jar was full. The students responded with a unanimous yes. "How?" said the professor. "Nails," excuse me, said the professor. "I want you to recognize that this jar represents your life. The rocks are the important things, your family, your partner, your health, your children, things that if everything else was lost and only they remained, your life would still be full. The pebbles are the other things that matter, like your job, your house, your car. The sand is everything else, the small stuff. If you put the sand in the jar first," he continued, "there's no room for the pebbles or the rocks. The same goes for your life. If you spend all your money and energy on the small stuff, you will never have room for the things that are important to you. Pay attention to the things that are critical to your happiness. Play with your children. Take your partner out dancing. There will always be time to go to work, clean the house, give a dinner party, or fix the disposal. Take care of the rocks first, the things that really matter. Set your priorities. The rest is just sand." And this is especially appropriate at this time of the year, so I wish you a happy holiday season.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mazzy Cannon from Shawboro Elementary. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mazzy. Next, our school spotlight. We'll start with Shawboro. Dr. Matt Lutz, principal.
Good evening. I like the, the mic is good. You guys will like this. Their mic up there, too? I want TV, this will be great. My wife's gonna have a field day with this one. All right. Today, we're gonna have some of our fifth graders show their leadership abilities and things that are going on at Shawboro that we really wanted to highlight, and we are pleased to welcome Abby Green to the stage.
Thank you inviting, thank you for inviting us to share with you about our school. My name is Abby Green, and I would like to introduce you to the seven habit, whoa, to our School of Leadership program. At Shawboro Elementary, we are studying the seven habits of highly effective people. This is reflected throughout our school with street lines lining our hallways. We also have posters in every classroom displaying the seven habits. Students at Shawboro are encouraged to use the seven habits to enrich their character and participate in multiple leadership opportunities. My friends are going to show you some of those opportunities.
Hi, my name is Marcelo Cherry, and I am going to tell you about the Shawboro Student Advisory Council, or SAT group. Every day, several fourth and fifth grade students help the school run effectively. There are daily hall monitors and door greeters, along with library assistants and cafeteria helpers that assist younger students with breakfast. There is also a team of students, from reporters to cameramen, that work in the media center to produce a daily morning news show. These students are proactive, reporting for duty daily without being reminded.
Hi, my name is Mazlin Cannon. I have been helping with the Shawboro Flag Team since I was in fourth grade last year. Gentlemen from the American Legion come to our school each year to teach us about the history and customs that go along with our flag and to provide us training on how to raise and lower it properly. Each day, the Flag Team puts on special gloves to raise and lower both the American and North Carolina flags. The team puts on first, puts first things first by making our flag top priorities.
Hi, my name is Teresa Seiva. At Shawboro, our PTO and teachers work hard to provide special programs throughout the school year. Student leaders are essential in helping making these special events successful. Already this year, we had a Fall Festival, Parent Resource Fair, Talent Show, and Veterans Day program. Our talent show was run completely by students. The backstage crew synergized to coordinate backstage movements and handle audio connections, and of course, emcee the event. Backstage crew members also help run a Veterans Day program.
Hi, my name is Nolan Wall. I'm a student leader and member of the Flag Team. I would like to thank you for allowing us to share our program with you today. The students of Shawboro would also like to thank our school board for providing the technology resources in our school for us to create and share Google Docs to enhance our learning. Through critical thinking skills, technology, and leadership opportunities, we are learning what we need to be successful in the future. Thank you.
And they put that whole thing together, all the way through.
Oh, that's great. Okay, before they sit down, Dr. Lutz, before they sit down, could you have them give their name one more time in the microphone here?
Right to the mic, guys. Go ahead, Abby, you first. Speak, give to the mic your name.
Just your name, baby.
Your name. And great. Your name.
Abby Green.
Go ahead. You have no problems.
Mazlin Cannon. Nolan Wall. Teresa Seiva.
Marcelo Cherry.
Great. Thank you once again. You did a great job. Next, we also have a school spotlight on Moyac Middle School. Principal Phil Walls.
I'm trying to not follow the microphone here, you know. The standard's been set. Good evening. Tonight, I've got Mr. John Roller here, who's our current Teacher of the Year, and he's gonna come up with a couple of our kids, Katie Bergen and Connor Kelly, and just talk about some of the cool things they're doing in the technology design class. So, Mr. Roller?
Go ahead. Go ahead. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Walls, for your introduction. Dr. Dobney, Superintendent Stefanik, I hope I said your name right when we welcomed you to the county. Members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, I am Mr. Roller. I teach a program called Technology Design and Innovation for sixth and seventh grade and Technological Systems for eighth grade. Next slide, please. With me tonight, I have the privilege of having two wonderful eighth graders that have completed all three levels of the middle school program. To my right is Katie Bergen and Connor Kelly. Next slide, please. Let's hear, before we go on this journey, let's hear a word from our student. If you can't hear it, board members, I will email it to you because this young lady did a fantastic job, and we call this the paper video, if you would please.
Innovation, it's not just a pencil, it's a stylus. With the lightning connector contained within the pencil, charging is easy. Connect your pencil directly to your iPad. Palm rejection gives the same ease that drawing in your journal gives. There is little delay, allowing your ideas to come to life in no time. Increase the pressure and your line gets thicker. All these features on the Apple pencil to help breathe life into your ideas. Available November.
This is the curriculum for sixth graders called Technology Design and Innovation Semester One. As you see, there are only three units, but there's also three lessons in each of the units. That allows me, as the teacher, to really take those sixth graders and really show them what it means to be an engineer. Next slide, please.
One of the projects we did within the sixth grade was a project for NC Highway 12. During this project, we had to research solutions for this project, and if one solution did not work for us, we had to go back to our research to try and solve the problem. Another thing we did was design challenges. In these design challenges, we had to learn how to build and use all the materials we had in a very short amount of time.
Next slide, please.
Another thing we did was we used PowerPoints to create a very simple game. One of the softwares we used was 3D10, which is an online software where you can create something using shapes and blocks before you transfer it into a physical model.
Next slide, please. In the seventh grade, this is the Technology Design Innovation Second Semester. As you see, there are five units, and of course, within each of the five units, there are three lessons. Unit six, if I get done in time, I'm able to begin looking at what we call the NASA, North Aeronautical Space. This one, I really look at how we can mine asteroids. To give you an idea, there is an asteroid that's close to the moon that has over $1 trillion in minerals. Next slide, please.
One of the projects we did in the seventh grade was we had to go and make a rock-soil separator. We had to research for this project, and we had to test it to see if it worked, and if it did not work, we had to go back to our research and try and solve the problem with it. Another thing we did was the American Disability Act project. In this, we had to make a backpack for students in wheelchairs. During this, we had to use criteria constraints to our advantages to create this.
Next slide, please.
Another project we did was the rubber band car. We had to make a car that was powered by a rubber bands, so we had to troubleshoot to see, to see how that worked. One of the other projects we did was the invention innovation timeline, which is where we got to see where our product started and how it came to be what it is today.
Next slide, please. And then finally, eighth grade technological system. This curriculum is designed to prepare the students for high school, which is the high school component called Technology, Engineering, and Design. As you see, there are six units. We are currently on unit number four and moving into five. They're gonna talk about one of the projects, and we'll have to brag a little bit, and that's the mousetrap vehicle. The current school record for Moyac Middle was 97 feet, six inches. Held by me. Well, the young lady standing beside me, who's been with me for three years, took the challenge. She now holds that record. You wanna tell them?
It was 108 feet.
And two inches. Next slide, please.
One of the projects we have done this year was the E-Ways PowerPoint. During this, we had to research about E-Ways recycling and upcycling, and we had to put these into our PowerPoint using our research. Another thing we did was the egg drop vehicle. During this, we had to research about how the egg, how we could protect the egg and what to do to fix it if it did not work the first time.
Next slide, please.
As you know, the mousetrap car, we had to do lots of research for this project and lots of decision-making on how the car would work and what the size would be.
Next slide, please. All of this could not be done by me myself. It took the administration as well as the parents. If the parents would stand, please, so I may recognize you. This is Katie Bergen's mom. This program is throughout North Carolina. This program is only four years old. For Mary Kate and Katie, that program was called Exploring Technology System. We have moved beyond that. North Carolina, as you know, is moving more and more towards STEM. STEM is science, technology, engineering, mathematics. The kids challenge me as I challenge them. Dr. Dobney, Superintendent, members of the board, I thank you for allowing us to present this to you this evening. You have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I ask you a couple of questions first? Do you do anything with the 3D computer design?
Yes, I do, sir.
Okay, how much are the kids involved in that?
We just re, got my Mobile Lab reimage. We're gonna put on Google SketchUp. I have a 3D printer, and that's how they can go from that phys, that virtual model, and that's very critical to this physical model. And we definitely do that with sixth and seventh grade. With everything up and running, the eighth graders will be able to do it for unit six, sir.
I was in his classroom week before last, I believe, when you were working on some of the projects, and it was amazing. All the kids were engaged, everybody was busy, and it was wonderful. Thank you.
What solutions did you come up with for Highway 12?
Well, we had to figure out, like, how to build a bridge across to some of the islands and how to not help the flooding, how to stop some of the flooding by building, like...
When they did the research, they actually went to NCDOT, and in on there, you actually see a proposed Bonner Bridge Extension. And in that one, you know, we're gonna do the new bridge. Pea Island, as you know, is slowly washing away, and they understood what channels and what burial islands now meet. They're actually gonna take a bridge and loop it into Rhodanthea, about the middle of Rhodanthea. So you'll come off of the Bonner Bridge Extension, go live it on the Pea Island, and swing around following the sound.
Great. Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much. Sounds like you did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, the work session that we held earlier. During the work session, we heard a facility study report from Ed Gordon from Smith Senate. We received an update on Wi-Fi on the buses, received an update on the school budget. We also received three different plans for the 2016-17 school calendar options, and those are gonna go back to teachers and students for further input. Then, we received presentations on school improvement plans from Currituck County High School, Shawboro, Travisburg, WT Griggs, and Central Elementary Schools. We had a second reading for adoption of policy on student assignment from non-public and charter schools, second reading and revision of policy on student and parent grievance procedures. We also heard the second reading on policies concerning immunization and health requirements, administration of medicine to students, deputy associate assistant superintendent contracts, school administrator contracts, return to work. And the last item we received was an update on the January Board of Education meeting, which has been rescheduled to January 13th. Next, every December, we have an organization of the board which requires an election of officers, and at this time, I step down as chairman and I turn the meeting over to Superintendent Stefanik.
Thank you, Dr. Dobney. Can't tell you how long I've been waiting for this opportunity to run part of the meeting, but as Dr. Dobney said, it's now time for the election of the chairman of the board that will serve for the calendar year 2016. Do I have any nominations for a chairman of the board?
I make a motion, we elect Bill Dobney.
And I second that.
That was supposed to be my next question. Do I have a second? Any discussion on that nomination and second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Dobney, you're the chairman of the board for 2016.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the board for the confidence they have in me. The next item is the election of vice chairman. Do I have a nomination for vice chairman?
I move that we nominate Jackie Simmons.
Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a nomination for Jackie as vice chairman, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Simmons, you're vice chairman again.
Thank you.
Next, we have approval of the agenda, and I would like to add item two, an item two, under 21st Century Professionals, and that will be labeled Superintendent Recognition. Okay, do I have an approval for the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next item, PBIS recognition. Virginia Arrington, Director of Secondary Curriculum.
Good evening, Dr. Dobney, Board of Education members, and Mr. Stefanik. Each year, North Carolina Department of Public Instruction recognizes schools in the area of PBIS, which is Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports in the work that they do in their schools. If you recall, last year, we received, two schools received green ribbon recognition, and that was Moyac Middle School and Currituck County Middle School. This year, I'm pleased to announce that we've doubled the number of schools that receive recognition, so that we have one school receiving green ribbon and three schools receiving the next level, which is Model School Recognition. For, to receive the green ribbon school, the team needs an active administration, a PBIS team in place, the team meets once a month with an identified in-school coach, and they must completed, have completed Module One of the training. That school is Greg's Elementary School, and their strengths of the program are implementing the seven habits and having a common school-wide language. And Ms. Chappell is here to receive this on behalf of Greg's. Okay, the next level, the Model School Recognition, again, has an active administration, a PBIS team in place that meets once a month, an identified in-school coach, and they will have completed Modules One and Two training. So the three schools, first, we have Currituck County Middle School, and their strengths are a newly revised matrix and a team that is flexible and works well together. And I believe Ms. King and Mr. Davenport are here this evening.
And Dr. King.
And Dr. King today.
Oh, and Dr. King today. Congratulations.
Moyac Middle School is the second one, second school receiving Model School Recognition, and their strengths are recognizing and rewarding students and staff. And Mr. Walls and Ms. Gores are here for that. And the final school is Moyac Elementary School. They just jumped right on up there to Model School Recognition, and their strengths are students know a good Panther leader cares, and the leader in me is incorporated with positive rewards. And Ms. Bizbing and Ms. Sawyer are here to receive this.
Thank you, and thank the schools for everything they do for our students. Our next item on the agenda is recognition, oh no, excuse me, the one we added, Superintendent Recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Dobney. Gives me a great pleasure to say that the Currituck County Schools has a second People Taking Action Award winner from Channel 3 News in Norfolk. If you remember, back in October, I believe, Mary Kate Morgan was recognized by Channel 3 News for her work in the community. And today, we had a teacher at Moyac Elementary School receive the award, Ms. Laura Hughes, and she was recognized for leading several community service projects with her class. And one that was very interesting and very educational was, the class was collecting crayons for children that are in Children's Hospital, the King's Daughters, and they learned about how they go through so many crayons, because once they use them, they have to get rid of many crayons because of the germs that are now on the crayons, and so they go through boxes and boxes and boxes by the hundreds. And so the school, or the class, I mean, led the collection of crayon campaign, and the students had a chance to deliver those crayons in person to the King's Daughters Hospital. So congratulations to Ms. Hughes, and we look forward to Channel 3 being back in Currituck County again very soon to recognize another outstanding person in our school community.
Really, it's nice to receive positive news.
Yes, most definitely.
And if, and if anybody wants to see that, it's going to air on Channel 3 this upcoming Tuesday, I think it was 6:30?
Six o'clock. Six o'clock or 6:30?
Yeah. Watch from 6 to 6:30. It'll be on there.
That way, we'll both be right.
But it's definitely Tuesday.
And if you miss it, and if we're permitted to do it, we'll, we'll get links and we'll put it on the school district website. If this is gonna be happening often, which we hope it does, we'll put Mary Kate's link first, and then we'll put Ms. Hughes's link second, and we'll wait for the third one, and we'll just keep, we'll add all the videos in for everybody to enjoy.
Thank you. Next, recognition of holiday card winners. Ms. Kinzel, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, Dr. Dobney, Superintendent Stefanik, and members of the board. It is a pleasure, this time of the year, to be out in front of you and share with you, again, more talent that we have in our district. Each year, we kind of supplement our, our calendar contest with a holiday card design, and we put this information out and invite our talented middle school and high school students to submit a design, and this year, we had a bountiful plenty of them, and then we went through them and had some voting that went on with multiple judges, and we made some selections. What we want to share with you tonight is kind of the unveiling of our card winners. And both card designs are up front here on the table. And they both are featuring a similar message, which was fitting because of the artwork that was involved. So both of our, our holiday cards will feature the warm holiday greeting message, and we will be sharing this out with all of our staff members, as well as some of our neighboring districts, just to let them know that we're thinking of them during the holiday season. So, we're here tonight to recognize these fine artists, and that is what we're gonna s- So we're here tonight to recognize these fine artists, and that is what we're going to start with. Our first card design was designed by Sarah Locklear, and she designed the fireplace and gave us the inspiration that we brought in the, the old English C for Currituck. And she also shared with the very traditional holiday setting. Sarah could not be here this evening, but what we will do is make sure she gets the framed version of the card, a couple of the cards for herself to, for, to give to family or to send out if she'd like. And she'll also receive a check for fifty dollars as our appreciation for her art. Sarah's a previous winner. She was with us two years ago, I believe, and had designed a card that was a winning card design. Our second artist is here with us tonight, so I'm going to ask Tara, Tamara, Tara, come forward. And I see Ms. Vinnick, you're in the back there too. Will you come forward? Come on over here. Tara Sensel, she designed a, what we're calling a reindeer, our reindeer holiday card design. And your art teacher, Ms. Vinnick, is here also, and again, she has lots of talent that she shares with you. So for your efforts, and she told me this evening, this is her second time winning. This is a blind voting. I mean, so we don't even look at the names. So there's talent here, definitely. But we want to give you your check and your cards. The original artwork, we want to make sure you get that back, okay? Oops, I'm giving you the wrong check. You want to cash it, don't you? Make sure you get that. And then we've got a framed one for you, okay? So we want to thank you for your, for your artwork and sharing it with us.
Congratulations. Could I ask one thing? Could we expand this to include middle school and also elementary next year?
Sure.
Because I think they have artists too.
We did have middle school that participated this year. They just weren't selected as a winner. We mixed them all together. We could certainly, if we're going to expand it to the elementary school, then we'll probably end up with categories.
Right, right, exactly.
We can do that.
Thank you. At this time, any student and parent that would like to leave, because I'm sure you have homework, you're welcome to leave now. Okay, then the next item that we have on the agenda, student board member reports. Mary Kate Morgan, Sydney Christian, Katie Phillips, and Jacob Walton. Mary Kate?
All right. Good evening. It's good to see everybody this time of year, Christmas. And to touch on some of the, I know that everybody just left, but two of the little girls that were doing the Shawboro recognition for their leadership talents in their school, I've also worked really closely with, with Kids Walk, Teresa and Abby. And they're both leaders in their school, obviously, and I also want to mention that they're great leaders in their community, and they've helped me a lot with Kids Walk, so I wanted to congratulate them as well. So first, I'm starting things off with Shawboro Elementary, who we recognized earlier. And the Mustangs are in the giving spirit as they count down to Christmas. We are currently conducting a food drive this week, and all donations going to our families most in need. Our annual penguin workshop is open through December fourth for our students to purchase small gifts for family and friends. The Moyac Middle School Band and Chorus will be visiting tomorrow to perform at ten forty-five for our students in grades three through five. Our holiday feast will be served on December sixteenth. Thank you to our cafeteria staff for making this a special holiday event for our community. All are invited to, to join us on December eighteenth at one fifteen for our annual holiday sing-along. We hope everyone has a wonderful Christmas. Now for Central Elementary School. Central Elementary School was recently visited by the big guy himself, Santa Claus. He arrived on December first and posed for several pictures during the Chick-fil-A fundraising event. All the proceeds collected from the event went to Central Elementary School's Leader in Me Fund. Next week, Central will be sending out information about their holiday feast, which is scheduled for December sixteenth during normal classroom lunchtimes. The Home and School Association is sponsoring a penguin workshop during the week of December fourteenth. At this event, students can holiday shop for their families and friends. On December seventeenth, the CCMS Band will be stopping by for a holiday concert in the morning at eight forty-five. Finally, on December eighteenth, we invite you to come join us for a traditional holiday sing-along, beginning at one fifteen in the afternoon. The Central Elementary School students and staff wish you a joyous and safe holiday season. And last but not least, I have Moyac Elementary School. And at Moyac, it is beginning to look a lot like Christmas. Santa Shop is currently open for students shopping through Friday, December fourth, and our BOGO Book Fair is arriving and will be open December seventh through tenth. The Moyac Middle School Band and Chorus will be performing for our kids Friday, December fourth at nine thirty. Our holiday kindergarten program is December eighteenth at nine o'clock, and our sing-along is that same afternoon at one fifteen. Several classes have adopted angels from our angel tree, and the holiday spirit is in the air. The Panthers wish you all a safe and magical holiday season. So to echo those schools, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I'm going to turn it over to Sydney.
Okay. Well, first is Currituck County Middle School. They say that December will be a busy month for the students. We had our first home girls and boys' basketball games Wednesday night, and our first wrestling match will be next week. I hear we have a strong team, and I look forward to a good season. Our volleyball team was co-champions for the Albemarle Conference, as well as our soccer team, who was first runner-up in the conference. Our football team won the bowl game against Moyac. We have Club Day this Friday, and Progress Supports went home on Wednesday. Our holiday band concert will be December fifteenth at six thirty. The community is welcome to come and hear our wonderful performance. Mr. Kay and the students have worked very hard in preparing for this concert. Currituck Middle will have the faculty-students games on December eighteenth at two o'clock. The grade level with the least referrals will get to choose the game, and players to challenge the undefeated all-star faculty team. Lastly, the Raiders would like to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season. Next, Currituck County High School, my personal favorite. They say that it's a big, it's beginning to feel a lot like the holidays at CCHS. Students in our arts programs are gearing up for upcoming craft shows and concerts. Students in our EC department have been crafting ornaments to sell at this weekend's craft show sponsored by the Ruritans. Our band and chorus, chorus programs have been preparing for our holiday concert, which will be held on December eighth at seven PM in our cafeterium. The CCHS SGO is sponsoring a holiday food drive to benefit some of our night families over the holidays. For a list of items we need our complete, to complete our holiday meal baskets, please see the announcements page of our website. CCHS is also sponsoring a Tree of Warmth. Students and parents are encouraged to donate warm winter clothing like hats, scarves, gloves, socks, and jackets to be donated in our community to students in need. Donations can be brought to the main office. Our winter sports seasons are underway. Spend some wintry nights catching the Knights' basketball, swimming, wrestling, or indoor track teams competing. On behalf of the CCHS faculty and staff, we send out our warmest holiday wishes. And lastly, Griggs Elementary School. They will be hosting their annual Senior Tea on Tuesday, December eighth. Our student leaders will assist in hosting this event by greeting and serving our guests. Our PTO is very busy this month with a family movie night on Friday, December eleventh, as well as sponsoring the Santa Shop for our students the week of December fourteenth through eighteenth. Griggs will also have a special visitor available for pictures on Monday, December fourteenth. On December sixteenth, we are inviting families in for our holiday feast, and we will wrap up December with our school-wide sing-along on December eighteenth. We wish everyone a safe and happy holidays. And that's Griggs Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. Before I start on my two schools, I just want to say that December is a month of joy and love and community for some people, but to also just keep in mind those who are less fortunate than us this month, those who have lost loved ones, who are having financial heartache. It's important to carry our thankfulness from November into December as we close the year, and remember those who are a little bit less fortunate, remember to keep them in our thoughts. So I just wanted to put that out there for everyone to continue to be thankful and to enjoy the holiday season and for what they do have. I get to announce JP NAP Early College. The JP NAP Math Club and sponsor, Ms. Jenny Durham, have been notified that they are one of five North Carolina state finalists in the National Samsung Solve for Tomorrow STEM Contest. Ms. Durham's Math Club began the contest with four thousand other state entries. State winners will be announced on December ninth and receive twenty thousand dollars in technology for their schools, then go on to compete to be selected as one of the fifteen national finalists and present their ideas in New York City. So good luck to our math club on that one. Ms. Bowyer's students will display and present their passion products on Wednesday, December ninth, from five thirty to seven PM in the JP NAP Media Center. Everyone is welcome. COA classes end on December seventh, which I am very excited about. And COA exams will be given from December eighth to the twelfth. JP NAP exams will be given from December fourteenth through the eighteenth, which is the next week. And secondly, Moyac Middle School for December will have their holiday band concert on December tenth. Their holiday chorus concert will be December seventeenth. The eighth grade chorus will also be traveling to Busch Gardens on December eighteenth, which I want to say that me and Mary Kate both did that with Ms. Chappell in eighth grade, and that was probably one of the coolest experiences of my life, so. Yeah, it started snowing while we were singing. We thought it was fake snow, and it wasn't. Very magical. But also, they will have their home basketball games on twelve nine and twelve fourteen, and their home wrestling match on December fifteenth. Want to Jacob?
All right. Well, first off, I'd just like to echo everyone's sentiments about a happy holidays. And I can tell you that I'm definitely ready for school to be over. And I also just wanted to make an announcement. I got my license on Tuesday. So, you know, if you see me driving down the road, you might want to keep your distance, pull over to the side. Just trying to help the community.
An announcement and a warning.
At least you're honest, Jacob. At least you're honest.
The sheriff took note of that, by the way.
Oh, you didn't hear anything. But I'll be covering Knott's Island Elementary and Jarvisburg. So Knott's Island Elementary will have its annual Santa Shop on December eighth to tenth. Students will be able to shop for small Christmas gifts for their families and pets. Parent volunteers will be available to help wrap the gifts for the students. All the proceeds are going to the Relay for Life Foundation. On December ninth, the third, fourth, and fifth grades will take a field trip to see the play, The Best Christmas Pageant Ever, in Norfolk. The classes are currently reading the book prior to seeing the play. On December sixteenth, they will be having their Christmas feast in the cafeteria during lunch. Parents and grandparents are invited to attend. On December eighteenth, Knott's Island Elementary will be having a Christmas sing-along at nine o'clock in the gym. Parents and grandparents are also invited to attend. And Jarvisburg Elementary School is gearing up for the holidays with many activities. On Monday, December fourteenth, they'll be having a snack with Santa from six to eight PM, sponsored by their Jags organization. They'll also be having a sing-along on December eighteenth to head into the break. And that's it. I pass it on back to the board.
Okay. Mary Kate, Sydney, Katie, and Jacob, thank you for your reports. Next item, field trip request. Superintendent Stefanik?
Thank you, Dr. Dobny. We have two requests. Both of them reside with the wrestling team. You already have seen or heard about one of them that happened on November twentieth and twenty-first. We appreciate, when we polled the board, they approved the wrestling team to go to that tournament. And they're heading back to the same city, the same area, on December eleventh and twelfth for a second wrestling tournament. Those are the only field trip requests for this month.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? What are these wrestling tournaments? Are they the same teams, or are they a different level, or?
I don't have that information.
Oh, okay.
They, a lot of times, wrestling teams, they, they do what you would call dual matches, so you're going against one team. And then several times during the year, they sponsor invitationals. And so they go in there, a large group of teams wrestling in the tournament. So it gives them, the kids a chance to wrestle against different wrestlers from different areas.
Okay. All I know is Havlex, ways away from here. Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next public comment session, we have one person signed up, and that's Ms. Kinzel, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening again, and I will be very brief.
Yeah, please limit your remarks to three minutes. That's what it says on the mic paper here.
Start the timer. I will be brief. I, I wanted to let the board know, as well as the public, that earlier this week, the school report cards, North Carolina school report cards were released. This is really no new information, but what is nice about the release is that it is one stop where it holds all of the information that has been disseminated through the various departments, and, and it gives the, the total picture of our schools. So using about thirty seconds of my time, I would like to be able to show everyone where they can go to find that information very quickly. If we go to the, our Currituck County Schools website, on any of our schools' pages, they can go directly to data and goals, and they will find a link that will take them to the North Carolina Public Report Card Link, Public Schools Report Card Link. Once they click that, it will take you to DPI site. And once you click on the fourteen, fifteen school report cards, then it will take you to, it has already timed out, but it'll take you to the actual site where you can then pull up the school's report card, the district's report card, as well as being able to compare on all of the different measures, because it's a tabbed feature. So once that comes through, then the public can go through and really dive in and see what kind of data it represents our schools. So just wanted to share that this evening.
And it will show our comparison with the state?
Yes, sir. And it will compare us to any other district in the state on the same page. It shows some pretty nice graphs. So it, it's a nice layout, and it's way more convenient and user-friendly than going through all of the individual reports that we receive.
Thank you, Ms. Kinzel.
Thank you.
Next information items, our next work session will be January thirteenth at the PLC at the JP NAP Early College. And our next Board of Education meeting will be right here, January thirteenth at six thirty. Board member comments? We'll start with Ms. Esri.
Yes, I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season as well. Some of our other junior board members, same sentiments. Love all of the people that are in your lives. Cherish every moment with them, and make plenty of memories that you can look back on and just smile. Also, I just wanted to read you a little pocket card that I carry around with me. May God grant you always, a sunbeam to warm you, a moonbeam to charm you, a sheltering angel so nothing can harm you, laughter to cheer you, faithful friends near you, and whenever you pray, heaven to hear you. Thank you.
Mr. Simmons?
It's hard to believe that next time we meet in here, it'll be, Christmas will be over, New Year's will be over, and we'll be back in here again. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I want to do something that nobody knows I'm going to do it. I want Nathan Large to come up front. Let me explain something to you about Nathan Large. Nathan is a graduate of Currituck County High School, I believe. He's our SRO officer at our high school. Well, last Wednesday, I believe, you didn't have duty at the high school, and you were out cruising the highways, correct?
Yes. I was, I was, I was doing reports, catching up on reports, getting work done at the school, and then I had to go up to Moyac and...
On your way to Moyac, what did you stop and help do?
There was a lady on the side of the road that, she had a flat tire, so I changed her tire for.
Let me tell you a story, first off, about that. It had rained and rained and rained the day before, and the side of the road was soaking wet, and I see blue lights on the highway. And what do I do first? I check my seatbelt, first thing. And I look, and I go, wait a minute, the car's turned the wrong way on the highway. And I thought, what in the world? And Nathan's car is pulled in front of it, and he's got the blue lights going. Nathan's a big boy like I am. Nathan is on his hands and knees on the side of the highway, changing a tire for a lady who he easily could have called a wrecker. He could have said, call AAA. He could have said, call your husband or a neighbor. But Nathan got out and changed this lady's tire. I just want to say you went above and beyond. The people that I see who are talking bad about police and fire, this is the kind of people we like to see in our county. And with being a graduate of Currituck County, it made me smile even more after I made sure my seatbelt was on. Nathan, thank you.
Under that, because I'm at, I'm at the high school, and Deputy Large, he's there all the time, and he was also my SRO in middle school. And Mr. Large, he is one of the kindest, nicest people I have ever met. He would, in middle school, he would come and eat lunch with us, and I'm sure Katie remembers that. During lunch, when he, you know, that's his only, sometimes, you know, his only personal time, and he'd come and eat with us and sit with us. He's just one of the kindest individuals I've ever, I've ever met, and so I just want to echo.
Nathan, I sat down and talked with your boss the other day.
That's good.
And I wanted to make sure she knew too, as well as what you did.
Thank you.
And Nathan is wonderful with our students. I've seen all kinds of fun pictures and videos and him interacting with our kids. And he doesn't hesitate in full uniform to encourage them and engage with them, and it's fantastic to see. And most of our SROs are like that, but we're picking on Nathan.
And if you haven't seen his video on Mr. Wheeler's Twitter, I believe, of him whipping a nay-nay, then you definitely need to check that out.
Next meeting.
From Powderpuff.
I'll find it. We'll find it and show it.
We'll find it. Put it on the big screen.
Okay, next, Ms. Kraft?
Yes. I visited all the schools this month, but I wanted to give a real shout-out to Buddy White for a fantastic performance at Currituck County High School with the play. And I'm saying that Bo Davenport did a great job with community involvement, but he certainly didn't do a great job for me, because I was hardly able to get out of bed the next day. But anyway, thank you to Mr. Davenport. The Veterans Day Assembly at Shawboro Elementary School was wonderful. And congratulations to Dr. Davenport and Dr. King.
I don't have much...
Skerritt?
I don't have much to add, other than I also went to Mr. White's play. I was at Moyac this morning with Ms. Kraft and Mr. Stefanik to, again, congratulate Ms. Hughes on her People Taking Action Award. It was wonderful to see her family show up, and then the whole school lined up down the hallway to support her. It was fantastic. They were, the kids were amazing. They love her. She does a fantastic job, just like many of our tons of staff and teachers. We would love to have all of you get the awards. I visited Central Elementary today, Currituck Middle School today, JP Knapp today with Ms. Kraft also. But I want to just say, happy holidays to everybody. Be sure to enjoy your time with your family and your friends, and your escape from school that some of you said you're looking forward to. And just thank our students, our staff, our administration, and everyone for all the hard work they do during the year. We appreciate all of it, and have a nice holiday.
Since the last board meeting, I got to tour Shawboro, Jarvisburg, Griggs, and Knapp. I'm always amazed at the level of instruction that's going on when I walk into a classroom, and also the number of students that are actually on task. And it just, you know, amazes me. And I also got to see The Diary of Anne Frank, which was a school play that Mr. White put on, and it just is incredible what he gets out of the students. And, you know, being a member of the audience, and to hear people laugh and cry during the same play is incredible. And which, was it you darnell that said somebody was behind you?
Young people.
Young people, high school students, if not middle school students, crying, like hysterically crying. Like, it moved them so much. They were so into what they were watching. It was just wonderful to see them learning from something that our children were really enjoying. It was great.
And I too would like to congratulate Dr. King and Dr. Davenport, because I know what it's like to go through that whole process, and you get right there to the end, and that's probably the worst part, the defense of your dissertation. And it has you sweating, but you both survived. Congratulations once again. And I'd like to wish everybody a safe, happy holiday season. And do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
I want to go say something to Kate.